Good evening, everyone. I would like to call to order this Centerville Board of Education meeting for Monday, July 26, 2021. Mr. Silver, call the board, please.
Mr. Gold.
Here.
Mrs. Durble.
Here.
Dr. Ror.
Here.
Megan Star.
Here.
Mr. Schreier.
Here. Item number three on the agenda. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Item number four on the agenda. Could I have a motion to approve the agendas presented, please?
Delu, second.
Call the board, please.
Mr. Gold.
Yes.
Mrs. Durble.
Yes.
Dr. Ror.
Yes.
Megan Star.
Yes.
Mr. Schreier.
Yes. Before we have a hearing of the public, we have a student here who was recognized by the Ohio Department of Health. It's Yash Agarwal, in attendance. Come on up, please, and come to the microphone. Thank you. This will not count against the 30 minutes of hearing of the public, by the way.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Yash Agarwal. I'm a rising senior, and I recently have been working on a COVID vaccine hesitancy project. So I've just been going around presenting on the vaccines just around Centerville, Ohio, and Montgomery County, and I've been having very good results. Today, Dr. Ror invited me here to just speak a little bit about COVID vaccination and why it's extremely important. I think currently, Montgomery County and Ohio is one of the least vaccinated states in the country, and this is extremely problematic because there is a Delta variant and there is a chance for a third surge. So I have a PowerPoint. If I'm able to make this real, should I just? Okay, so my PowerPoint just goes over various aspects of COVID vaccination. One thing that I would like to address is just events and facts revolving around vaccines. So when it comes to vaccination, there are a lot of myths out there, and I'll just go through a couple in the meantime. So for one, a lot of individuals are very afraid of getting vaccinated because the vaccines were made very quickly, and this is a relatively valid reason for being hesitant towards getting the vaccine. But one thing that a lot of individuals don't know is that since about February 24th, trials have been continuing. So we've had a prototype of the vaccine since about February, and our vaccination efforts and our approval process has been staggered. It's a new system, and no skip, or no step has been skipped by any means. We've gone through every single step, so phase one, phase two, phase three trials, looked at efficacy, looked at symptoms, made sure that this vaccine does not cause, for example, infertility issues. All ingredients are very similar to ingredients in most vaccines, so you've got liquids, you've got fatty acids, you've got things that are natural in your body, maybe it's help in delivering the mRNA for the mRNA vaccines. And you then, of course, in the mRNA vaccine, during the Pfizer vaccine, you have mRNA. Now, because mRNA technology isn't the first real-world use that we've seen of mRNA technology, many people are very confused or don't truly understand what mRNA technology is. So I'll just give a brief overview of it. mRNA, simply put, is just a way for us to, without using an actual viral vector, without using any form of the actual disease, it's a way for us to develop an actual identity. And how we do it is we use mRNA, which is a tool that helps synthesize proteins in our cells, and we inject it into our body. So that mRNA will go inside, make proteins, those proteins will then be placed on the outside of our cells. Our immune, our immune system will recognize this protein, say it's not supposed to be here, it will go in, it will destroy that protein, and in the process, it will learn how to, or it'll develop antibodies against the COVID-19 virus, which is SARS-CoV-2. So there is no actual, there is no screening or part of COVID-19 that's in an mRNA vaccine. The beautiful part about mRNA vaccines is that all you need is the DNA or sequence of a virus, and from that, you can pretty much create vaccines against any virus that we have. So this is a technology that, after its success in this pandemic, will see a lot of use in the future, and within five or six years will be something that we all recognize and are very used to. Other than that, I would just like to address that the vaccine again does not cause infertility issues, it does not contain any sort of trip, sorry, implant or tracker or chip, and it's been, very few people actually have allergic reactions. About 11 cases in every year, sorry, 11 allergic reactions for every 1 million doses delivered, which is very, very few compared to the amount of deaths that happen every day from COVID-19, about 1,000.
Yash, we need you to wrap this up.
I apologize, but yes, I just want to go on. Please get vaccinated if you are confused on how to get vaccinated. Just go to GetTheShot.com. It's, it's a class of my own, and you'll find it in your vaccination clinic where you can get vaccinated. Thank you.
Item number five on the agenda tonight is the hearing of the public. The Board of Education provides this as a convenient opportunity for public comment before any official action is taken. If you would like to address the board, please come to the microphone, state your name and address. And as Dr. Henderson noted, we will limit all comments to no more than three minutes, and we'll have a 30-minute segment for the hearing of the public. The board will, of course, listen to all who speak, but generally not engage in discussion or dialogue at this time. Matters requiring follow-up will be directed to Dr. Henderson, as always, and many people have here the last 20 months or so. Individual board members can be contacted for a set meeting appointment, and written correspondence can always be mailed to the board office. So we have a lady up there right now. Go ahead, please.
My name is Jill Evans. I am a Centerville grad, class of 2008. I've been a nurse for 27 years. Sorry.
Thank you, Ms. Radlos, please, Jill.
I live on Applewood Lane in Centerville.
Thank you.
I've been a nurse for 27 years, 25 of those have been in the ICU. In March 2020, the year of the nurse, my cardiovascular ICU became a COVID ICU. We struggled with issues like reusing disposable N95 masks and isolation gowns, wearing them for hours on end. The entire medical world struggled with how to treat these patients, and we struggled watching most of them suffer and die alone and afraid, with no visitors or family by their side. We struggled most with that. We were beyond stressed, scared out of our minds that we'd be next or worse yet to bring it home to our families. We updated our wills. Some of us moved out of our homes and into campers or hotel rooms to protect our families. We bought our own N95 filters and wore painter's masks if we could find them. We decontaminated ourselves in our garages when we got home, and we did what we needed to do to keep our families safe from this horrible virus. We are even now still haunted by some of these patients. The one that felt compelled to host a prom for her kid in the basement and contracted COVID from one of the guests and died. And how is that child handling and processing the reality of that now? We think about the single-parent frontline healthcare worker anti-vaxxer that died, and how is their high schooler coping now? The hometown frontline worker transported down to Cincinnati for lung bypass and died. The vigilant young woman who couldn't refuse a visiting from out-of-town asymptomatic sibling and died. The young, healthy, athletic father of four that lost a leg and is beyond dialysis for the rest of his life because of COVID. The married couple in the ICU on ventilators with their COVID-positive 18-year-old high schooler at home in charge of their elementary-age child. Months of care reported to these people, knowing they had families out there depending on us, all the while enduring endless complaints from people about having to wear a mask and maintain social distancing. What I didn't worry about was my son getting it. I was confident and comfortable with what the district was doing to keep kids safe. I'm not a teacher. Remote learning was not easy in my house with my one kid, but we got through it, knowing that it was the safest option for everyone. When the schools reopened with options, I carefully looked at my son's needs and the options provided, and I sent him back, knowing that masks were mandatory and distancing was being enforced. My son was so happy to go back that compliance was not an issue. He understood was at stake, and compliance with masks and distancing was not an issue. Nurses are leaving the profession because of all this. We're in a national...
I'm sorry. Thank you so much for speaking, but you have had three minutes now. Thank you so much.
Hi, my name is Emily Holt. I live on Medical Point in Centerville. This time last year, a lot of parents were fighting for their kids to have entrance into school. I think that's something everyone can agree with. Kids learn best with interaction. And they got it, just without, with a delay while our school board made sure our schools have what they needed for students to come safely. My kids haven't gone to go back yet. I think it's important for our community to realize that high-risk children exist, and they exist here in Centerville. My kids have been counting down for months. They want to go to school, but one of my daughters is high-risk. I was actually at age of my children most of today for my daughter's big annual testing. I'm still wearing the medical grade mask that they have everyone wear in the hospital. Her specialist said she cannot be around unmasked, unvaccinated people. She deserves to be at school this year as much as any other child, but she can only go if the safety measures recommended by the CDC, American Academy of Pediatrics, and even our own Ohio Department of Health are followed at school. Our elementary school accommodated my daughter during an outpatient surgery. Schools are required to, but they want to step above to show us that they care about our family. I don't hear anyone talking about the high-risk children, and I wanted to give you a concrete These children deserve a safe learning environment, as all children do. Families like mine have been left behind. I just can't understand how anyone would say you either have to go against your daughter's specialist's medical advice or just not send your children to school. How is that not discrimination? It also means I can't send her little sister because we can't have siblings bringing home COVID to high-risk children either. While I'm asking our school board to reconsider the decision on school-wide masking, especially if numbers continue to rise, I also have a solution to propose. Our high-risk children need safety measures to be able to come to school. We saw last year that forms could be emailed out every time adjustments were needed. There could be an elective way for families who need or want their children to mask to opt-in to a masked classroom. If we had even one class per grade following the CDC, AAP, and ODH recommendations, then high-risk children would have a safe learning environment that they need. Since this would simply group together those who choose to mask, it also doesn't require a school-wide mandate. It would leave choice to families while making it possible to accommodate students who need it. I'm just asking for some time. There are students who have high risk and all students under 12. They need time to get access to get fully vaccinated. There has to be a safe, equitable way for them to come to school until then, and hopefully that access will come soon. I propose a reasonable stopgap while we wait, and I really hope you all will think about the high-risk children right here in our community.
My name's Greg Kerr. I live at 900 East Wood Road, Centerville. I'm not here so much to discuss masks, good or bad. Everybody's got their opinions on that, and they are opinions. I'm not here to discuss vaccines. People have had them, several have it, that's on you. You want to do it, great, we understand. I'm not so here to discuss about CRT and racism and all that stuff. My main reason for discussing with y'all right now, having a conversation with right now, is the school board and superintendent seem to be focusing on a lot of things here other than their main responsibility of the educational welfare of students. We don't need to be doctors in school. If you're a doctor of profession, that's great. If you're a lawyer, if you're an attorney, you're a realtor, you're a teacher outside of school, that's great. In school, you all have been deemed and set up to be the educational welfare people of our students. Looking right here at your code of ethics, 1, 2, 3. Remember that the board members' first and greatest concern must be the educational welfare of all students attending the public school system. We don't need you to be parents. We are the parents. Now, I do understand that there are precautions that people are taking right now, and no one's here doubting COVID, no one's here doubting the importance of taking care of yourself, but it needs to be a parental choice. And if we're saying that you have to have masks because they work, then the people that need them can wear them because they work. It's silly to sit there and say they work and other people have to wear them if they don't want them. If there are other people, you need to protect and wear them, and they're wearing them. So the point I'm just trying to get to is that we'd really like to see the school board get out of the business of being a parent and focus more on the business of taking care of math, reading, writing, you know, history, US history, important things that your job is as superintendent of school and board members of the school. There are several people in the community that are going to be rising up that are businessmen and women and parents of Centerville school system that will be challenging three of your positions, and I hope that the swathe of people that are behind them right now continue to support them so we can remove the three of you all that have been causing grief on a lot of people who have not wanted you all to put jurisdiction over their personal rights and liberties freely. So let's get out of politics. Perfect example of the day, as you're talking about the CDC recommendation for masking. It's a recommendation, it's not a mandate. The governor cannot mandate health department to do anything legislatively. The laws have been written, and you can't do it. So you all cannot blame the state for anything if you make any changes in your policy or decision. So please understand that respectfully, we understand the rights of those who want to have a mask, but you also have to respect the rights of those who don't. We want a vaccine, we're done. It's not your business. Your business is to keep kids. Thank you.
I'm Mary Lou Holland. I live in 9628 Ridenwood Trail. I'm a 40-year educator. I value academic achievement. Like many others, my family came to Centerville, built a house, invested in this community because of the outstanding school. My children graduated from Centerville schools with an excellent education, scholastically well-prepared for college and a successful life. The things have changed. I'm alarmed, and you might be too. In the last reporting period, September 2019, before COVID, the State Department of Education published the annual review of scores and ranking of all 608 Ohio school districts. Centerville only ranked 142. What? 142 out of 608 school districts. We are only in the top quarter. Why? According to the state, our weakest areas are academic. Math achievement testing at-risk readers K through 3. What does this mean? It means our scores are slipping. Other area schools that scored and ranked better than we did, Beaver Creek, Springboro, Bellbrook, Oakwood, Mason, Kings, Brookville, Lakota, Monroe Local, and Tipp City. Again, our weakest areas, math achievement scores at-risk readers K through 3. Do we need more money? It seems not. The state says there is a positive correlation between wealthy systems like ours and achievement testing. To look at this more closely, the state has reranked the school districts adjusted, adjusting them for income. The sad news is, when the systems are reranked, adjusting for income, we were 464th out of 608 Ohio school districts. We're in the bottom quarter. This information has been available for almost two years. My questions for the school board are: Are you focusing on academic wholeness? What is the academic recovery plan that has been developed for Centerville? Will extra time and resources be found in these areas? Will our hard-working reading and math teachers be given extra support by the system? Will we be using the $428,000 that the government just gave Centerville in COVID relief to get our kids caught up? And in the future, will someone want to purchase my house because of the high-performing Centerville schools? I certainly hope so.
Ms. Holland, thank you. It's been three minutes.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Emily Bochholzer. I live on Gatekeeper Way in Centerville, and I just wanted to take an opportunity to thank the board for all of their hard work and for taking the time to really look into the science of these issues and for having Yash here tonight and for really taking a look at what's in the best interest of all the students, those who can be vaccinated, those who can't, high-risk, and those under 12. So we appreciate your diligence, and we, as parents, thank you.
Hello. My name is Gobi Kumar. I live on Schoolway Drive, and I'm Yash's mom. I'm also a pediatricologist, and I've been there for 70 years. And I just wanted to comment on your teachers' negligence and tension that the school is just supposed to pay care of education, because if that was the case, then Centerville wouldn't provide occupational therapy, physical therapy, speech therapy for a lot of kids who have developmental disabilities. And I can tell you that I have people from all, many, many districts who require my patients, and nobody does it after a Centerville high school, Centerville school district. Number one. Number two, if it was only education, then we shouldn't have sports. So I agree with the fact that this is only for education. Children's health is also the responsibility of the board, and as far as getting them out of here, there are a lot of people who will make sure that they are. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Victor Collins. I live at 1661 Gatekeeper Way. My background is 28 years plus in the medical community as a medical assistant. I've worked for multiple specialists over the years. And I just believe it's time to address this one statement that I continually hear, just get vaccinated. I know there's a lot of people who are talking about this this evening, but I've also, I've given vaccines for multiple years, and I've also seen injuries from them. With the comment of the mRNA, it doesn't use a dead virus of COVID. Normally, typical vaccines do do that. The mRNA technology is new, and it does, it has showed that it develops, you know, antibody-dependent enhancement from the S proteins. So I just want to make some people aware, there is other information out there, maybe it hasn't been into your hands yet, but this, it is in the EUA status right now. It is not licensed. The vaccine is not licensed at all. It's in phase 3, experimental trials. So there's multiple recordings of people having adverse reactions, and I don't know if you've heard that or not, but there's multiple about blood clotting and strokes and different things with fertility. You have to dig a little deeper and find that information. And recently, I even reached out to many firms asking for the safety data sheets, and they had none of them, and none of them came with the files. I was just concerned about that because we usually have those on file when we are at the office. There's multiple warnings that have been added to the vaccines, even the Pfizer vaccine that was offered at the clinic at Watts, and that is for myocarditis, and it increased at the second shot. It even went up to 827 people with myocarditis after the second shot. So just be careful with your kids, just make sure they're not having any heart pain after exertion. That's one of the symptoms, and it can be fatal. And there was also added to the J&amp;J shot in July 13, the Guillain-Barre syndrome, which is a serious neurological condition. So just look a little deeper, and you might be able to find some of this information. And there's also many lawsuits out there trying to halt them for kids under 18. They are not at high risk. So look at those, and they're just, they're not licensed yet. And the other thing I wanted to share is, because I was made aware that some teachers in this district showed a vaccine video of the students claiming the shot is safe at the end of last year. When the FDA is continuing to halt and add warning labels to a product that's caused serious side effects, we need to cause, you know, answer, you know, we need to look into that. I would question why we weren't offered that opportunity as parents to see that video just as you offer the puberty video for us to look at before our kids view it. So there are many parents and students who have been recommended by the physicians not to get this experimental shot because of their health status and medical history.
Ms. Holland, it's been three minutes. That's fine. Thank you.
My name is Calvin Ray, and I live at 260 Edgeworth Drive. There's a lot of talk about choice and options, and I want to underline what another parent said tonight. There are creative ways forward. There's a lot of folks, for whatever reason, don't want to send their kids to school with masks. I don't have to understand that. I would like for my children, age six and eight, who are vulnerable, who cannot get the vaccine, who don't have access, to be able to go to school in a safe way. I believe there's a creative way forward in which you can create opt-in classrooms in which masks are required. I know it's a logistical challenge. I've heard from teachers, I've had conversations with a retired superintendent, and it seems to be that there is a way forward if you think it's important and if you're willing to do the hard work. And I want to partner with you. I want to do the work with you. I believe in the talented administrators we have in the school district. I believe in the talent and creativity of this board. So know that I'm supportive of you, know that I'm supportive of the administrators, but I believe there is a creative way forward to make sure that the folks who don't want masks can get what they want, and those of us who frankly know what's coming, just looking at the numbers, that we might have some confidence in school this fall. Thank you for your hard work.
Hi, my name's Mike Larsen, 40355, which is pretty good. I want to thank the school board, who let us make the decision to allow parents to make a choice on masks for their students, their children. I realize that there was a lot of pressure either way on us, or locally, the parents and parents have the responsibility for their children's decisions. Really, they should be consulting with their healthcare providers, and the school board should be focusing on the numerous activities, the decisions we have to make here, and making those decisions we should make. I think that we have to also, I think that we realize that COVID, the virus is not going anywhere. We're going to have pressure again. It's not going to end today. There's going to be vaccines, and so there are going to be cases in the school districts, so the school service may as well. So you have to be prepared to deal with that. I'd like you to consider the whole picture, not just transmission rules. I think that there's other factors, unintended consequences that we tend to overlook that should be. Last year, the CDC reported teenagers, the rate of mental health emergency, because it's went up 31%. There's also a risk to development of capabilities within the school districts, either remote learning or wearing masks. with either remote learning or wearing masks such as non-logical cues that are so important for teachers to see how well students are learning. Recently, the medical journal indicated that there's a risk of increased carbon dioxide levels if children's long life is prolonged with mask wearing. I think it's important to look at the whole picture and not just incident rates. So many other impacts we have to consider for students that will never learn. I appreciate you considering that.
Thank you. Is there anyone else out there that would like to address the board? Come forward, please. Thank you.
My name is Captain Pearson. I'm in Barlow Trail for almost four years. During, obviously, I was going to talk to you about education concerns, but COVID seems to be the bulk of the opinion right now. I would ask also that one of the things we consider is, we have a clinic study that says, when you have had COVID and recovered, you are also a serious antibody carrier and immune. Those statistics seem to be always left behind when discussion takes place. Whether that be intentional or not, I don't know. But as one of the adverse people having had COVID and recovered, I tend not to want to do the rest of my life in trade. Thank you.
Anyone else like to address the board tonight? Seeing no one, we will go to item number six on the agenda, which are the board and administrative reports. Item 6A is the legislative report. Mrs. Parks.
Do you have something to report here on summer break right out? So I think this is number, I'll have more.
Good for you. And you have 6B as well, just in the board reps.
It's sad when kids grow up and it's sad when they leave the nest. You know, they've only been in my nest for two, three years. They've been pretty cruel kids. No, don't start. These are three board reps who are graduating. They're going to play exactly what they did to our district, where they are going, and what they will be saying.
Hello, everyone. I would first like to say it's been such a pleasure to be part of this board. I'm learning so much that no other student knows about. So when I was a sophomore, I was able to establish recycling in the stadium, in the back of central, like all the parts in the school and the classrooms, because that wasn't a thing. And then also, I've been able to see these metal posters that Madison created. I was able to put those up. I also tried to work with the DEI, that's a newer group, diversity, equity, inclusion. So hopefully, someone else can do that. And that's my contribution. I'm going to do high state university. I'm going to be studying English literature as my major. My minors being philosophy and creative writing. I know you're going to do that, but I'm still really excited.
Tell us your name.
Oh, I'm June.
Hi, I'm Grace. And first of all, I'd just like to say thank you to the board and Centerville State Schools for setting up such a supportive environment for the last 13 years of my education and for setting me up for a wealth of success at the Ohio State University. I'll be studying health sciences in Spanish and I hope to go to two men's school afterwards. Regarding my experience with the board, I've really just been working with Mr. Carroll and trying to set those connections between the students and the faculty. And we've worked on the candy comments that have been addressing many concerns. I'm starting to formulate these projects with the student board reps. And so those will be implemented. They have been already. And they'll be implemented even more in the future. And again, I'd like to say thank you.
In the past about two and a half years, I've worked alongside the board and realized how much education we care about us, including the three who are up for reelection. Yeah. I just really want to thank them for enabling us to do everything we've been able to work on with their help. In my time here, I worked along with June, under her leadership, on the recycling project. We were able to get new bins for the district and kind of bridge that with our environmental club. And I'm leaving behind a new waste project that'll give our extra food back to our low-income students. And so we left the three of them, I believe, our three newest members. I'm going to Washington Lee University in Virginia to study sociology, political science, and minor in German. And just thank you so much.
Tell us your name.
They really have done great things for our district. They've now even worked with the principals, the board members, and also state representatives and senators. We expect to see more great stuff come out of you guys in the future.
We are at item number seven, the superintendent's report. Dr. Anderson.
Thank you, Mr. Schreier. Typically, in July, I give the board and the community an opportunity to hear a little bit about our back-to-school plan. And so I know a lot of people who ask questions about what we're looking at for next school year and some of the things that we're working on. So first of all, I did want to share that, I don't know how many people saw this today or not, but the Ohio Department of Health did a whole press conference today. And they basically issued three layers of protections for schools. The first one was vaccinations. They strongly recommend for school staff and students who are eligible to get vaccinated. They feel it's very, very important. The second layer of protection was that if you cannot be vaccinated, that masking is a good way to protect yourself and others. And they do recommend that those who are unvaccinated consistently wear masks indoors to reduce the spread of the virus. The third layer of protection was that schools should continue to maximize distancing as much as possible, improve ventilation, such as bringing in as much outdoor air as possible. And I'll talk more about that in just a second. And maintain good sanitation and hygiene practices. So here in Centerville City Schools, we've worked harder over the past year to follow the guidance from public health while paying attention to laws and mandates. This fall, we will welcome students back to school in person five days a week on our normal schedule. In the spring, there was a House bill, a piece of legislation that was passed, it was House Bill 110 passed, which was called Budget Bill. And attached to the Budget Bill was also an item that no longer allows school districts, as of June 30, to do a remote learning plan like we did last year. So that is not an option for public schools in Ohio to use this year. And although masks will be optional in our school buildings next year, we are still strongly encouraging students and staff who are unvaccinated to wear masks indoors. Please also, though, understand that there still is a federal order out there that requires public transportation to wear masks. So all students on school buses will have to wear masks on school transportation. We are still working on the guidance regarding contact tracing and quarantines, but we believe that fully vaccinated individuals will not have to quarantine. We're not sure about that just yet, but we hope to get more updated information soon and will push that information out to our community as soon as possible. So as your family prepares for the new school year, I wanted to share some specific information about what we think school will look like in the fall. And hopefully, take some of this information along with the recommendations of public health professionals into consideration and you decide whether to have your child wear a mask at school. First of all, we are a large suburban school district. Our enrollment is increasing and it is going up. Currently, we are averaging about 20 students in our kindergarten classes. 21 in first grade, 22 to 23 in grades two through five, 23 to 26 in grade six through eight, 25, excuse me, 25 to 26, and even a little bit higher in some of our high school classes as well. So we will work hard to practice social distancing, but it is difficult to do that in a large school district like ours. We also plan periodically to make sure we are following the best practice. And there will be times when we feel it is necessary to bring students together a little bit closer, working in some smaller groups as needed. So in most ways, schools will look a little more different than it did this past school year, which I think everybody is happy about. We've learned how to do things effectively and those practices will continue, such as encouraging students to wash their hands or use hand sanitizer more frequently and adding more seating to our lunch areas. For activities outside of the classroom, such as co-curricular and extracurricular clubs and organizations, those will take place this year. And our athletic teams will continue their normal practices and follow all of the guidelines outlined through the Ohio High School Athletic Association recommendations. Our enhanced cleaning routines and sanitizing practices that began last year will continue. Beginning last year and into this summer, we have updated many of our HVAC systems and upgraded all of our filters. Additionally, this summer, we thoroughly cleaned every HVAC system in the entire district and outfitted the system with new controls. This allows us to bring in as much fresh air inside our buildings as possible. Finally, as we've learned over the past several months, when it comes to dealing with the global pandemic, our plans are always fluid. If there are mandates or laws requiring public school districts to read and state certain safety measures, we will have to follow those. I hope this information is helpful to our school community. And we will continue to share any new and updated information via our website and other email communications. Thank you.
Item number eight on the agenda is the treasurer's report. We'll begin with Sol.
Good evening, everyone. Tonight, we want to review, review our fiscal year '21 year-end general fund balances. And then we're going to change in to talk a little bit about the state budget. As Dr. Peterson referenced earlier, that was the budget bill that was passed, House Bill 110. There is a new funding model in place called the Fair School Funding Plan that we'll talk about a little bit. And then I'm going to give you a little bit of a schedule of what the next month, two funds looks like in terms of giving you information about our finances during the board. So the first thing I want to review is how we got to May. So we talk about finances all year long. At the beginning of the fiscal year, so usually in August or September, we set the financial plan for the year. And then we approve a five-year forecast in November. That usually pretty much mirrors what we talked about at the beginning of the school year. And then in May, we do a revision to that. And at that point in time, we have 10 months worth of actual data that we're able to incorporate into our conversations at that point. So I just want to talk a little bit about where we started the year and where we were in May. We approved the five-year forecast in May. So we increased our revenue estimates by $1.2 million for fiscal year '21 compared to that original plan. And that was due for two reasons. Number one was our property tax collections were a little bit higher than what we had anticipated. That was due to the reappraisal and due to the high construction rate in the area. And then also, the state funding part. Fiscal year '20, we saw reduced state funding. Due to the pandemic, every school had their funding cut at the very end of fiscal year '20. We were told at the beginning of fiscal year '21 that that would be our baseline for the year. And the governor actually restored a little bit of that funding when we got to January. So in May, we made some revisions there. And on the expense side of things, we decreased our expenses by about $3 million, again, compared to that original estimate. This was due to a lot of reasons. A lot of it has to do with the federal grants that we received. So a lot of our operating costs, we were in the buildings one less day a week. We were remote the whole first quarter. All of those things impact the fuel we were using, our utility costs, and that type of thing, cleaning supplies. Curriculum and technology purchases that we made, we were able to do that through those federal funds that I made reference to. And then we did have some savings in our wages and benefits because of fewer substitute employees than what we had thought we would have. Through all the quarantining and things, because we're remote, we allowed some things that way. People were able to continue to teach even with quarantines. So moving on to talk a little bit about revenues for fiscal year '21. And I'm using, we're comparing our actual figures to where we ended in May when we talked last time, when we approved our last five-year forecast. We ended the year about $239,000 overestimate. Not any one particular thing, but again, just to mention the property taxes with the new construction in the township and in the city and our reappraisal, we saw very strong property tax collections. I also want to point out that for fiscal year '21, our state funding was still at a reduced level. So even though we did get some of that back that we had lost from the year prior, we were still at a reduced level. And then in terms of the other revenue category, just due to the economy, interest rates, it's great to buy a home right now, right? But it's not great to invest money right now. So schools are very limited on what we can invest in. And so our interest earnings were much lower than what they've done in years past.
Or did I see where the interest earnings was pointing? Does he drill 8% on one of the funds?
One of our money market funds that we keep a little bit in, yes, it's very, very low interest.
Sorry to interrupt.
Most of the investments, though, are under 1%. It's very, it's very low right now. Then on the expense side of things, we were about $250,000 under what you were approved in May on the five-year forecast. So the other expense category, you can see up on the screen, that that was a little bit over what the budget was. And that was due to the advances that we approved at the end of June. I was hoping we wouldn't have those. We don't always have advances, so that was a little bit unexpected. So that money is getting repaid back this month to the general fund. So it's just to be able to meet auditing requirements and compliance from that same way. Those three payment advances are actually on the agenda tonight that I'm asking you to approve here in a few minutes. So from an expense standpoint, we ended up just a little bit better than what our five-year forecast pointed out. So for the year, we had anticipated in May that we would have a surplus. And a surplus means that our revenue is higher than our expenses. We had anticipated that to be about $3.5 million. And we actually ended the year about $4 million better in terms of revenue over expenses. And so we added to our cash carryover balance. At the beginning of the fiscal year, we had $27.8 million of carryover balance. And we ended the year with $31.8 million. So we had an increase in our cash reserve of about 14.5%. Any questions on fiscal year '21 from the board? So one of the hot topics that we're talking about as we're working on our fiscal year '22 budget is what's going to happen now with our state funding. So Governor Line had signed House Bill 110, which is Budget Bill for the next two years. And it does include a new funding formula called the Fair School Funding Plan. Information on this plan and how it's going to impact schools in general and us specifically, it's still being developed and communicated either weekly in webinars, listening to the experts talking about how this is actually going to flow to the districts. But one of the key components to this is called funded where educated. So right now, we have families that choose other educational options. They might send their students to a community school. They might send them to the STEM school. They might open enroll into another district that accepts open enrollment. And when that happens, the full $6,000 per student gets deducted from us for that student to go to that other educational opportunity. We don't get $6,000 per student. We get about $1,600 per student. And so it's something that we've been talking about for a long time and how the funding formula has not been fair to any district, not just us. Every district deals with this. So what I'm expecting to happen with this change and how this funded where educated happens, our expenses are going to go down. So every student that open enrolls out of this district, every student that goes to STEM school or to the community school, we charge that off as an expense. And so part of the expenses that I reported to you is a cost for that student to go somewhere else. We get the funding for them and then we pay the money out. And so we gross the revenue, we gross the expenses. So that's not going to happen anymore. So our expenses are going to go down. In turn, our revenue should also go down because we're not going to get the funding for that student if they're going somewhere else to school. So that's what I'm expecting to happen. This last five-year budget included what is called Student Losses Success Funds. We've been using that money to pay for some of our social emotional support through South Community. That funding... That funding has been not in the numbers that I've been reporting to you here in the general fund. That's going to grant, and so we were required to report that as a state grant. That's going to get wrapped up now into the state foundation system that we get. So it's going to, instead of a grant, now it's going to get wrapped up into our general fund. So again, that's just going to be a little bit different, and we'll talk about that in the future. One of the things that everyone needs to understand is that this new funding formula, it will not be fully funded in this biennial budget. It's at least a six-year phase-in, and this budget bill is just for two years. They put some caps in place that don't allow districts to grow beyond certain percentages. So we won't see the full implementation at this point in time. And again, things are just still a little bit unclear. It takes a long time to watch all the details of a new budget bill out, especially when they change the funding mechanism. I hope by October, we should have a real, they'll actually be funding us according to the formula, and I'll have a lot more information that I can share over the next couple of months.
Laura, first of all, you just mentioned you hope by October. When do we two get our first payment? Is that?
In July.
In July?
And we received money, yes, but it's just estimates.
It's just estimates.
Yes, we get two payments a month from the state. It comes like every other week, pretty much. And we get that twice a month, and that's continued. So we're still giving us money, it's just that it's estimated.
It's estimated based on last year because this isn't, we don't know how much is going to be phased in in year one.
Not yet, not yet. We're still working on that.
Back to where you were talking about funded where educated. Because you're saying that you expect that both revenues and expenses will go down, just so I'm understanding correctly, you're saying that, that you're expecting the expense side to go down more correctly? Because we get the $1,600, but then we have to pay out the $6,000. And under the new bill, we wouldn't get the $1,600, but we also wouldn't have to pay that out.
That's correct.
Because the full $6,000, or whatever the number would be, would go directly to where the education is taking place.
That's correct. I expect our net financial position to be better because of the way the formula will be working. Yeah, that is correct. Our expenses will go down more than what our revenue will go down.
Thank you.
If fully funded. And there is no guarantee that it's going to be fully funded in the future. That's a real key point, as you say, John.
One of the things we talked a little bit about actually this morning, the administrative chief talked about, is that this will not do away with having to ask tax levies in the future. You know, the state funding is still based on property wealth, and now there's an income wealth with this new formula, there's an income component as well. Centerville is a wealthy district in terms of those metrics. And so that brings our state share down. So the idea is that we have the ability to raise money locally. And again, that just varies like from district to district based on property wealth and that even after. And so, you know, I'm optimistic that this is a fairer way to fund schools from a state standpoint, but it doesn't eliminate the need to ask the voters for taxes.
The state is still not providing funds, not only to our district, but most districts of the actual target that it is.
Correct.
It's less higher than the $16,000 we're getting. Regardless of what formula they use at this point, we're not going to get, well, we should get a pinch out from the state, requires certain things to be done. Mandates, after mandates.
Yes, definitely, definitely. So the schedule, moving forward in terms of talking about the finances for the new year today, I wanted to make sure to report out to you our fiscal year '21 figures for the end of the year. So happy new year. We are into fiscal year '22. And so from now through the middle of August, we have weekly meetings at the central office to talk about budget. And we talk about all the line items, you know, we talk about staffing levels and building budgets and different things that way. And so we're working on that, and we'll be working on that into August. There's a lot of considerations this year, this new funding formula through the state is a consideration, and how that looks and what's going to be different compared to what we've done in the past. It's not quite status quo like it's been in the past. And then also how are our federal grants? We are receiving a lot of ESSER money, which we talked about at other meetings in the past as well. And so how does that incorporate into what we're doing? And so we're working through all of that. So my hope is, especially since we did move our board meetings back in August, our work sessions will be later than normal, I hope that we will have a good plan to present to you in August. Latest case, though, it'll be September, but our hope is to have that ready for you in August to review.
Laura, can you, on the ESSER funds and the total relief funds, since it came up tonight as a question of how we're going to use that money? Do you have an idea of how we're going to use it, and what restrictions there are on that money, and how we use it?
So like Laura said, we have weekly budget meetings, and so we have conversations about the various federal funds that are coming in. And so basically, there are some stipulations for each of the funding categories, but we are able to use those in some cases to pay for salaries. So we paid for our recovery and intervention program for the summer, and we paid all of those salaries for the teachers that worked in the summer school program. We added some staff to do exactly what we felt we needed to do to improve and to get in and intervene with students as we started this new school year. So we'll be using this money to pay for their salaries as well. Some of the money back when we started the pandemic was actually used for supplies, masks, gloves, sanitizing, hand gel, and things like that that we were using to make sure that we were cleaning our buildings as well as equipment goes. And then some of those things were also used to fund technology, the Chromebooks that we used during our remote learning plan. So a variety of different things that we worked together as a team. And we did share with you guys as well throughout the, excuse me, the last 15 months, a variety of different things that we were going to use the money for that we felt were priorities to support our students and to do the right things for our kids.
So that money, some of that going to teacher salaries, those teachers are doing interventions to get these kids back up to where they may need to be, and a lot of those things. So those things are happening.
That's correct, definitely, definitely.
Thank you. Next on the agenda is item number nine, the treasurer's recommendations. Item 9A, consider approving the June 2021 financial statements, including the monthly general fund rolling report, the monthly general fund breakdown, monthly cash reconciliation, a monthly fund activity report, then and now purchase orders approved by administration, certified by the treasurer, and supported by board resolution totaling $126,753.25. Could I have a motion, please?
So, ma'am?
Sorry.
Any discussion or comment on that? Call roll, please.
Mr. Dahl.
Yes.
Mrs. Durbaugh.
Yes.
Dr. Rohr.
Yes.
Megan Sparks.
Yes.
Mr. Schreier.
Yes. Item 9B, consider approving the minutes of the following Board of Education meetings, the June 28, 2021 regular meeting, and the July 19, 2021 special meeting.
So moved.
Second.
Call roll, please.
Mr. Dahl.
Yes.
Mrs. Durbaugh.
Yes.
Dr. Rohr.
Yes.
Megan Sparks.
Yes.
Mr. Schreier.
Yes. Item 9C, consider approving the return of advances to the general fund from the following funds. Fund number 507, the elementary and secondary school emergency relief fund, $458,124.36. Fund number 510, the coronavirus relief funds of $479.60. Fund number 516, the IDEA-B, which is a special education fund, for $1,836.16. And finally, fund number 590, Title II-A, which is another federal funding fund for Could I have a motion, please?
So moved. Second.
Any further discussion on 9C?
I just wanted to clarify, these are return of funds to the general fund that we had to advance to close out the books. It's not the spending.
That's correct.
Call and roll, Laura.
Mr. Dahl.
Yes.
Mrs. Durbaugh.
Yes.
Dr. Rohr.
Yes.
Megan Sparks.
Yes.
Mr. Schreier.
Yes. Item 10, we're going to take all but D2 to get it correct. Okay. The superintendent recommends the employment, change of employment status or change of contract status for the certificated personnel listed on Schedule B for the salaries programs and on the effective dates given. The superintendent recommends the employment or change in employment status for the support staff personnel listed on Schedule C for the salaries programs and on the effective dates given. Superintendent recommends the employment of the personnel listed on Schedules D and D1 for supplemental contracts or extra duty assignments. Superintendent recommends a granting of leave of absence for the personnel listed on Schedule E for the reasons on the dates given. The superintendent also recommends the reemployment of non-renewed personnel listed on Schedule G for the reasons and on the dates given.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion on 10A? The sovereign call and roll, please.
Mr. Dahl.
Yes.
Mrs. Durbaugh.
Yes.
Dr. Rohr.
Yes.
Megan Sparks.
Yes.
Mr. Schreier.
Yes. Still on 10A, the superintendent recommends the employment of the personnel listed on Schedule B2 for supplemental contracts or extra duty assignments. Have a motion, please.
So moved.
Second.
Call and roll, please.
Mr. Dahl.
Yes.
Mrs. Durbaugh.
I'm staying.
Dr. Rohr.
Yes.
Megan Sparks.
Yes.
Mr. Schreier.
Yes. Item 10B, consider approving bus routes for the 2021-2022 school year with authorization from the supervisor, supervisors, of transportation to adjust the routes when necessary. We discussed this in previous meetings.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion on 10B? Call and roll, please.
Mr. Dahl.
Yes.
Mrs. Durbaugh.
Yes.
Dr. Rohr.
Yes.
Megan Sparks.
Yes.
Mr. Schreier.
Yes. Item 10C, consider a resolution approving the 2021-2022 school fees as we had previously discussed.
So moved.
Sorry.
Any questions or comments on 10C? Call and roll, please.
Mr. Dahl.
Yes.
Mrs. Durbaugh.
Yes.
Dr. Rohr.
Yes.
Megan Sparks.
Yes.
Mr. Schreier.
Yes. Item number 11, any final comments for the board?
Good luck, kids.
Finally, item 12, could I have a motion for adjournment, please?
So moved.
Sorry.
Call and roll, please.
Mr. Dahl.
Yes.
Mrs. Durbaugh.
Yes.
Dr. Rohr.
Yes.
Megan Sparks.
Yes.
Mr. Schreier.
Yes. Thank you for coming, y'all.